I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Rattone City- Could we have roll call, please, my pleasure?
Mayor Sagata-
Present.
Mayor Protem Schuster-
Present.
Commissioner Chatterley-
Present.
Commissioner Chavez-
Present.
Commissioner Giacomo-
Present.
Okay, could you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thanks for coming out this evening. Couple of quick announcements. There's a notice of potential quorum. Quorum of the city commissioners will attend a community economic development presentation by Better City LLC at 6:00 PM on Thursday, June 27th, at the Rattone Convention Center. Let's look at it on 3rd Street. All city offices will be closed on July 4th in observance of Independence Day. And our next regular commission meeting is Tuesday, July 9th, 6:00 PM, right here. At this time, we will now take comments from the general public. I just ask if you are here about a specific item on the agenda, wait till that item comes up. If not, we will take any comments from the public right now. Okay, so you're done, we will go to item six.
I'm sorry, are these comments to what I'm purpose that I'm here for? Or-
Sure, it can be. But if- are you here for a specific item on the agenda?
No.
Oh, okay, no, then absolutely, you can absolutely step up, state your name for us.
My name is Gerald Kimball. Been here a year, a little over a year. And I think the noise level here is extremely high for a little town like this. And I think there's not too much being done about it at all. It's nothing for me to be at the house and listen to people's radios in their cars all day long. Way illegal. I know what the legal limit is, it's 100 yards, which is 300 feet, that's not very far. And I can hear a car from over on the west side of Brilliant, come over to my house on MacArthur. And further into the apartments, that's way over 300 feet. And I've met with some of the officers, and that's come out and talked to me. They really don't seem to have a concern about it that much. And I've called, I'm sure the dispatcher's know me pretty good, I bet they do. They probably know me by name by now. But I've- Well, I'll give you two examples of what's going on, you know. I bought the house. I wind up living next to the worst neighbors I've ever lived by in my life. Which, you know, that's nobody's fault, it's their fault, you know, being the kind of people they are. But they pull up there one day, a guy pulls up there one day to pull their car out of the driveway. And he's got his radio going extremely loud. I could hear it down the end of the block if I walked down there. It's that, I live pretty much in the middle, 1468. More to the south end, but I could walk down to the end of the block at the church and I could hear his radio. So I called an officer, I called dispatch, and they send an officer out there. Officer Valdez, John Valdez, I believe was his name. He pulled up to my house, and he walks over there. And he was there visiting with him a minute, after about a few minutes, a minute or two, he asked him to turn it down. Well, the skinny kid turned it down a little bit. Still way illegal. But that didn't bother this officer. I don't know if he could tell, if he's trained to be able to tell if a noise is illegal or not. You know, that confused me. Anyway, he stood there going like this, watching them pull out the, hook the chain up to the car and watch them pull it. I don't know what he thought he was doing. But I felt it was pretty good wasting my tax money. It was ridiculous, I thought, I've even got it on my phone, if you want to see it. Anyway, this has been going on, and I ain't mad at dispatch, I get upset about this. This is almost going as far as I can stand it. And so, back and forth, back and forth, this noise just keeps going. Across apartments, there's two officers, one officer I know lives over there pretty close. And I think the boss officer lives at 1407 Brilliant. And I know he can hear that stuff up there if he's at his house. You know, I don't know what's going on, why this is being allowed, I don't get it, because they're way illegal. You know, an officer came to my house and me and him were talking. And he used to live in Amarillo. And he said, we was talking about the noise limit, he said, he said he compared- He lived in San Jacinto District in Amarillo, which is pretty much the gutter. The San Jacinto District has probably got more people in it than Rattone does altogether. Amarillo is 200,000 people. You know, if you split it up into little sections, each section bigger than Rattone. That's another thing, I wouldn't be proud of at all to know how much noise is in this town. You know, it's terrible. He compared it to the San Jacinto District, which is the bottom, the bottom. You know, I wouldn't be proud of that at all. Anyway, another complaint, that's one thing, two days ago. Noise over there in Brilliant again, there's three houses over there that are bad. I know each one of them. And the noise was coming over. I figured it's one of the white houses. Now, this is, okay, so I called dispatch, and I told him it's probably one of the white houses over there in Brilliant. I didn't know the address. Well, it was back and forth, the officer said he'd been over there twice. I heard the music, this keeps going, keeps going, just stop for a few minutes and go again. And then stop for a few minutes and go again, it'd go longer than it must stop. So officer said he'd been over there twice and couldn't, there's only three white houses and none of them had any noise. Well, so I told him I'd go over there, I told the dispatcher I'd go over there myself. So then I drove around the corner, went to Brilliant. First thing I saw right down the street was a pickup parked on the driveway with a door open and a guy working on it. I knew where the noise was coming from, so the house was brown. Big deal. So I went downtown to the street and I seen two elderly people sitting in two houses south or next door to him, I don't know. They were right next to him pretty close. They're in their 80s, 70s or 80s. When now they turned around, I just pulled over, got out of my pickup and went and talked to them. Shook hands, talked to them, he's a retired pastor. And I said, who's making that noise over here? I just happened, they pointed, right there, the guy that was working on that pickup, had the pickup door open. I knew it was him when I turned the corner. But police officers got to know that he's got to look for a white house. You know, this is third grade stuff. This is ridiculous. And that's the kind of stuff I ain't putting up with. Another thing that I'm concerned about is when a street is tore up, it doesn't get fixed back. There's a street coming out of the loafing jug that was tore up last summer, it's been like that almost- If you're going west, it's barely passable, the westbound lane, you need a four- And it's been passed, but it's barely passable, I don't get that. And the street that I live on, I don't know how long it's been tore up. Boom, 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 boom. You know, this is, maybe I'm a little bit spoiled to Amarillo ways, because I see what my tax dollars do in Amarillo. You know, they get out and they fix streets and stuff. And, you know, this is another concern. Now, and I think if y'all expecting to grow, people to come in here and enjoy the life here, it's going to take more than the pretty country. You know, they're going to be able to live here, and there's all kinds of people, all walks of life in this town. Some of them work at nights, I'm sure, some of them need to sleep during the daytime, I'm sure there's sick people that need to sleep during the daytime. And these people are running around making this noise that you can hear. An easy, what, block away? And I don't believe Police Department is going near enough, or even concerned near enough about it. And that's all I've got to say, that's what I'm here for.
All righty, thank you. First I've heard of any noise complaint. We'll talk with the city manager, we'll look into it. As far as the street issue, that is on, we just passed, got the money from DOT to do the repairs on that, so that is on our project list and it should be getting done.
Well, I'll update you, and that's Hard Avenue in Brilliant. And so, we have, you know, accepted bids for the work, commission awarded that bid to a contractor. One of the issues we have here is it's tough to attract bids to smaller projects like that. And so, that was a good bid, that was a competitive bid, we had contractors, but, you know, the contractor kind of let us know that they've got the interstate project, the big project going here, and we're in touch with them. And yes, I'd prefer that they were out there working on that today. Hard and Brilliant are not very good. And we've made a priority out of that and lined the funding up. I wish they were there tomorrow working on it, but they're kind of working in their schedule. And I think we've agreed to a little flexibility there, because we need these bids to come in. But Hard and Brilliant, that's priority. MacArthur, we've looked at MacArthur. I don't have a project for MacArthur, it's on the list there somewhere, but I think the discussion was that it needs reconstruction, there's a lot of residents there. I think we would offer the cost sharing arrangement to property owners if they would participate in that, then that would help move MacArthur up the priority list. But it's, we have a lot of residential streets like that, this is about a block long, but there are, I think there are eight homes on that, or maybe 10. But drainage is an issue there, need to work on drainage. I think we need to reconstruct the pavement. And we have a lot of those, so as we've talked about here many times, we prioritize these street projects, Hard and Brilliant, those are streets that generally everybody in the town drives on. They're torn up now because we replaced the water line, that was a steel line that had a number of leaks and issues with it over the past years. And presented a risk of break-in at any time. So now it's replaced with a brand new line and you have a utility trench down the middle of the street. And so, we've got the contractor hired to fix that. And it's going to be a first-class job when we get that done, but we're kind of working with this contractor to get over there and get that done.
All right.
But yeah, we'll definitely discuss the noise issue. I can imagine, you know, that's stuff to deal with over and over.
Yeah, I've got one more thing to say. On Brilliant, there are quite a few retired people, elderly people that have to put in this noise. I don't know why they don't call you. Well, I know what I've been told, but it's true or not, I don't know. I'm not going to, you know.
Sure, sure.
There's a lot of old people.
And we'll look into this matter and see what we can surmise from it and go from there. Yes, ma'am?
While you're still on the issue of noise, may I make a statement? Do I come to the podium?
Come, please give your name, please.
I just moved here from Pueblo, Colorado, my name is Jerry Brackett. I just moved October 15th here to Rattone, I'm an artist, I plan on getting in the art galleries in Albuquerque and Santa Fe. I'm, anyway, on the subject of noise, there is one kid in a Harley-Davidson that goes to work at 6:00 AM. I live on Dwyer Avenue. And he blasts those, his Harley-Davidson muffler as loud as possible. And I was hoping that you folks would, say I'm new, so I'm not sure of all your ordinances, but I was hoping you would pass a very strict noise ordinance on mufflers. There's also a car that blasts up the street as fast as it can on Dwyer, I don't know why you call it Dwyer Avenue, because it's dead ends at the top, also with loud mufflers. So, being a 74-year-old mother of two grown sons and a grandson, mufflers are a big thing. But this motorcycle, he needs, if you would just announce that you suddenly have a noise ordinance, I know in Pueblo, there is none. And one of the biggest reasons I moved is because of the extremely noisy BNSF, Burlington Northern Southern Pacific Railroad that blasts their horn, the worst horn honking ever. And here it's great, you only have the two. Anyway, it's J-E-R-R-I-B-R-A-C-K-E-T-T at 613 Dwyer. And you talk about bad streets, oh, please, our street is so bad. All you do is you come in and you patch little holes, it is the worst, it's a horrible street too. So I don't know how bad yours is, but I understand money and taxes. But please, announce on the radio and everywhere you have a new ordinance, or the decimals, whatever, there is none in Pueblo. And believe it or not, they just hired a mayor, elected a mayor last November, and I guess you already have one, which is cool. Is the mayor here, I don't know. Congratulations. Pueblo, twice, three times larger than Rattone, and they just finally got a mayor in November. So, anyway, talk about noise, you should crack down on noisy mufflers. Did you sign in? No, I will, thank you. I'm really here because I don't understand still the mobile homes. It's okay, there's nothing I can do about it, because I'm so low income, the house I got is about all I could afford. But I would like to know what year city council approved allowing single whites to move into our brick and mortar neighborhood? What year was it, or why did you do it?
And Mayor, I can address a couple of things. First of all, we'll review the ordinance, but, you know, I know going back a number of years, the city addressed the noise ordinance and drafted an ordinance that said you cannot exceed so many decibels.
Okay.
And we know that that means if it's really loud, you're probably in violation of this. And a number of citations went to municipal court, who then dismissed those, because he said unless you can prove to me that they exceeded a decibel level, then I don't know, and you're going to have to prove that they exceeded whatever the decibel level was. And that was the issue, I think, going back a lot of years. And I think a lot of communities struggle with that. You know it's loud, I know it's loud, it's annoying, but when you go to court, how do you prove that they surpassed a standard? That's what the judge is asking for, is you've got to give me proof that they passed some standard. With speed, it's pretty easy, we can give the judge proof that you exceeded the speed limit. Exceeding the noise level, that's a lot trickier. And so I think a lot of communities probably struggle with that.
If you had an officer, excuse me, if you had an officer somewhere around Dwyer and Tindall, 6:00 AM, maybe in an unmarked car, you would hear every morning, Monday through Friday, this Harley-Davidson. And they have this thing where they think, well, we're up at 6:00 AM going to work, everybody should wake up with them. Has to be, because they blast that, you know, as loud as possible. You can hear them 10 blocks away, every morning, 6:00 AM. So just have an officer there and then he can pull over and ticket him right there and do the test with some little, whatever it's called.
Yeah, it's that-
Much noisy.
Yeah, bringing evidence to the judge, who has said, you're going to have to prove to me that this-
Well, you can now.
Exceeded a noise standard, that's tricky. And so, that's something we have struggled with, I know other communities have struggled with that as well.
Well, if you announced it and cracked down, I think they would go have their mufflers changed, because no one has an incentive to quiet their mufflers if they're not notified that there's an ordinance, and I did. So you do have one.
Well, we'll-
You have an ordinance.
I'm saying that-
Wait, you just said the judge overturned it because of no proof.
Well, I'm saying that the judge would not hear any cases unless, if it's based on decibels, because-
That's where the place come in.
You can go in and testify, it was really loud, it probably exceeded those decibel, that decibel level.
Of course they do.
But, and you're trying to set a standard in your ordinance, but if that's a standard, you're going to have to have specialized equipment, which is-
Which is just a-
Let me say, it's very challenging. I'm not saying you can't build a case and take that to court and get the kid on the Harley, but I'm saying it's challenging.
So the Police Department does not have such an apparatus to hold up and record the decimal, currently?
I would say that if they do, like with speeding, he's got to be right place, right time.
Six than Tindall, 6:00 AM.
This concept of the distance comes in. It's loud when you're standing next to it, if you're 100 feet away or you're 300 feet away, what's the standard? So we'll review that.
Thank you.
I understand the noise issue-
6:00 AM.
And how that can really get on your nerves. So we'll review that, but I am letting you know that we've struggled with this, I think a lot of towns struggle with that. That's a tough ordinance to enforce.
Another thing about that, you know, they got this noise coming in, you live near them and all, they get housed, they're trying to watch TV and stuff, and they got no right to do this.
Right, I agree with you.
We pay, I pay my bills on my house, they don't pay it. I pay for my house, they didn't pay it, they got no business coming in my house with anything unless I give them permission to.
Absolutely, I agree with you.
All right, thank you.
Mayor and Mr. Berry, audiologists do have a standard, and there's a graph, and I'll see if I can get one. So it still may be difficult, but we can bring it to the judge and see if he'll agree with it. Things like if windows rattle at a certain level and-
Well, and again, the judge has said, you know, there's a subjective standard.
Right.
How do, you know, I assign guilt based on a subjective standard? And if you want an objective standard, bring that, bring the proof of you violated an objective standard. It's challenging, but we'll review it, and we'll ask other communities if they've had some success with that as well.
Mrs. Brackett, for your information, the ordinance has been in effect for a long time. And it is a noise ordinance.
This kid is intentionally, maybe he was the test case that he won in court. But it's, anybody can tell, it's one of those things you know when you see it or you know when you hear it. Any officer, if he was in that corner at 6:00 AM, he would ticket him for a noisy muffler. And then you could challenge him in court. And the judge could go out in the parking lot and say, turn your Harley on, let's hear it. And just one of those womb wombs, and you would hear it. It's hideous, it's extremely loud, and it's, maybe it could be the test case. Or all the other young kids with mufflers.
All right.
They know better.
I think we all understand this, we understand what loud is. The judge has a different standard, I would say. As hard as the judge assigning guilt, saying, yeah, that's pretty loud, court does not work that way. And that's what the court has reported to us. But we will definitely, you know, we're back and look at it, absolutely.
Is there anything I could get my phone and pick up the noise? So I guess I need to go buy something, buy something that will pick up that noise.
You know, I don't have a lot of expertise here, so we're going to have to, you know, evaluate this. I'm certainly no expert on it, I'm just simply reporting that this is kind of a, you know, a problem that crops up from time to time. And we've looked at ordinance, updated an ordinance, drafted an ordinance, and then ran into issues with it, but I do understand.
We'll take a look at it and see what we can do, firm it up, and go from there. All right, moving on to item six. Committee reports from commissioners, Commissioner Chatterley.
Okay, on June 1st, I attended the New Mexico Municipal League Board meeting in Santa Fe. I had just had a few highlights to report. We did see the mayor was also in attendance, we saw draft of the program for the annual conference, which is in Las Cruces, August 28th through 30th. They have some different workshops lined up regarding pension reform, cybersecurity, the census, housing economic development, embezzlement, and social media. And so it looks like it's going to be a pretty interesting conference. Executive Director Bill Polgenetti gave a few more updates on the legislative session regarding various tax reforms. He did mention as part of House Bill 479 that the de earmarking of local GRT options, that ordinances will now be done in decimals and not fractions or percents, so that's kind of a change there. And then he gave us a little bit more information on House Bill 6 about the destination-based internet sales tax. He did say that the $24 million earmarked in the two years that are in the interim before that takes in effect, that $15 million will go to cities and $9 million to counties, and that'll be based on a per capita basis. And so, the league is working with tax and trying to have the distribution given to cities separately and not part of the lump sum GRT, so that they can see exactly how much it is. I don't know that it will be a lot, but it'll be something. And that will help us, they can convince them to kind of separate that out. I believe that will probably be, they sounded like it said it might be in July.
Possible.
Let's see. We did talk quite a bit through the budget there, and there's a few changes regarding making the league's retiree health care plan more sustainable. And they also approved a policy change regarding a 25% limit for annual due increases over the previous year, which is mostly to address issues with municipalities that are experiencing short-term financial spikes from oil and gas proceeds, because some of them, without a limit this year, would have dues that were going to rise 150 to 300%. So they kind of made that change. The branding team met June 6th. The list of wayfinding points and verbiage with the arrow directions for the signage along North, Second Street, from the north exit to the south exit, has now been turned over to Mr. Berry for mapping and for sourcing a vendor for those wayfinding signs. The final mock-up for the north billboard is complete, and was also turned over to Mr. Berry to coordinate with a sign company for design and installation. We will need some welding done to kind of build up that sign, I think I gave you mock-ups of that last month. And the branding team did create the two pop-up banners that you see here that went to the Outdoor Retailer Show, the Affordable Living, an Affordable Living poster, and a rack card geared for business recruitment. And all of those were at the Outdoor Retailer Show. They also took branded Rattone, New Mexico stickers and Explore Rattone carabiners, little climbing carabiners that were a huge hit, and everyone was, had one by the end of the show. So that's quite a few people. The branding team's also working on table tents advertising annual events and attractions for local restaurants and hotels. We're working on finding a location for a large Rattone Monument sign on 8764. And next up, we need to get a date for coordinating merchandising with branded items and having some specific marketing photos taken while things are happening this summer. Those are some of the priorities. Our next meeting is July. Along with several of you, I attended the New Mexico Municipal League Policy Committee meetings on June 22nd in Albuquerque. I was at the catch-all group of community economic development, governmental operations, and human resources, and public infrastructure. Some of the resolutions that were retained, involved increasing funding for libraries, making municipal court fees regarding automation, parallel to magistrate and metropolitan court fees, increasing the monetary threshold for sale or lease of public property before being subject to referendum, changing a portion of the International Building Code for airport hangars, adding stormwater under the definition of a utility in its own right, and increasing the time limit for annexation petition. There were a few new resolutions that came forward. And two of those were presented by Mr. Berry regarding rural job creation incentives and enhancing remote work opportunities in rural areas. And then obviously some were deleted because they have been accomplished or replaced. The Rattone Beautification Coalition, we didn't have a meeting, but I was asked to report a little bit about the yard of the month contest. There were 32 nominations for the yard of the month in June, which was awesome. We had excellent community buy-in, and we want to thank everybody for that. The winners for June were, first place was Roger Sanchez. And then second, the runner-up was Jerry and Becky Vanway. So we want to congratulate them on their yards, it's very exciting. And we'd like to thank Kooniko Tires, Bruno's Pizza and Wings, Zeller's Cleaners, the Aquatic Center, Rattone Pass Motor Inn, Mr. Vacuum, and the El Rattone Theater and Papa's Sweet Shop for prize donations. And we have a lot of volunteers working on this, probably the top three, or David Stafford, Lori Bunker, and Diane Tripp have been putting that together. So the July nomination, since they had so many, they're going to shorten the window to just a few weeks to nominate. to just a few weeks to nominate. So that's going to start July 1st. You can start nominating more people. The contest will continue through September. You can nominate yards on Facebook, at Ratone Beautiful or in person at the visitor center. Yards must be visible from the street and will be judged on overall appearance. One yard will be chosen from the four monthly winners as the overall winner. The last thing is I will be attending the North Central New Mexico Economic Development District meeting this Friday in Santa Fe.
Thank you. Mr. Jockamo.
Mr. Mayor, there's no library board meeting this month. Next meeting scheduled for July the 16th at 5:30 PM with the library. Also on the RPS board, they have not met this month. Their scheduled meeting is tomorrow night at 5:30.
Mr. Chatterley.
The Ratone Water Board met on June 18th. Lake Maloya continues to spill and there's an inch over the spillway at this time. This is the longest it's spilled in many years. The water supply is excellent at Lake Maloya. Eagle Nest is currently still holding on our 12,000 acre feet that the city is, that we Commissioner Jockamo and myself attended public hearing for the total maximum daily load for the dry Cimarron Upper and Lower Canadian River Basin and the Northeast New Mexico Environment Department. That was very interesting. Filter plant continues, the project continues to move forward and it's in progress. And we discussed the piezometers installed at Lake Maloya and I happened to see the general manager was up there testing them. So they're working. Discussed downtown paving projects and applications for the water, general manager, there's 11 at this time. Also, the water department purchased a 310 John Deere backhoe and this is it. Have you guys seen it? So, and it's already in operation. It's already dug a lot of trenches and the finances for the water department are holding firm. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Proten.
All righty, June 3rd was the Yacht and River Commerce meeting. I was unable to attend. Were you there?
The chamber? No.
And anyway, they're, they've started the outdoor market and it's been going through the month. They have some, they've had kind of a small number of people showing up, but I guess nice crowds coming to purchase items from the outdoor market. The farmer's market will join them, I believe, July 6th. They'll be starting up and the difference there is they'll be in the same location at the visitor center. The difference is primarily the product you have to sell. The outdoor market is much more for crafts and farmer's market is designed for food and food growers, food producers. So they're pretty busy. And I believe they have some pretty good numbers of visitors that have been coming through for June. June 18th was the Housing Board Authority meeting. They met at noon. Of course, they're finalizing next year's budget and they had a special meeting today to finalize that budget and they've made some good progress on that. They've got a variety of repairs and renovations that are going on in different locations that have been moving along. I, of course, attended the water board meeting with Commissioner Chatterley and I have nothing else to say about that. Then although Saturday, June 22nd, I did attend the New Mexico, the Municipal League Environment Department Policy Meeting in Albuquerque. And there was really nothing earth-shattering, but it was a, it was a good meeting, very productive. A lot of talk about the runoff and how to deal with nitrates and phosphates in the water. And of course, we can encourage everybody once again to use phosphate-free and nitrate-free detergents and laundry, for laundry and dishwashers. And then on June 11th, I was able to, after our last commission meeting, I was able to go over to the, the special meeting they had with Land Commissioner Stephanie Garcia Richards. And I got to meet with her a little bit, but we, we didn't have anything in particular to talk about except the nice meeting she had just finished. So.
When I received mine, I turned it to her for the water department, but I still have another report.
Oh, sorry.
No. Ratone Financial Advisory Committee met on June 18th and we approved the report to be presented to the commission this evening. That's all. All right. Ready for it, Danny?
I think I'm finished.
All right. As Commissioner Chatterley stated, did attend the district board meeting for New Mexico Municipal League. She covered it while. Did attend the public, I was part of the Public Safety Policy Committee. I chaired that committee this year, this past weekend. Couple of resolutions that we worked on and are resubmitting. One last year, you know, was the school safety issue. We got a lot of things done with that one. It was our number one high last year. This year, since nothing seems to have been done concerning this, it's, we've got a resolution concerning law enforcement and mental health professionals, crisis intervention for mentally ill. You know, mental health in New Mexico right now is basically nil. It's really suffering, so we put that as a number one and we're hoping to get the same kind of response that we did with the school when we put in number one, that they will say, okay, you guys really want something done here, let's see what we can do. Hoping to generate some interest that way. That was it as far as that. The rest are pretty much things that aren't really germane to this upcoming session, but we're going to submit a couple of them as, as they are. Tomorrow, Commissioner Chatterley and I will be meeting with the director for North Central New Mexico Economic Development District. She's coming up to introduce herself and we'll get a feel of what she's got in mind. Probably talk a little senior services with her as well, so we'll see how that goes. And other than that, that's all we have. Okay, at this time, we will move into the business action portion of the meeting. Section 7A, approval of minutes from Better City Workshops, May 28th through 31st and the June 11th, 2019 regular commission meeting minutes. Minutes were in your packets. Should have been time to review them. Take any discussion.
I found nothing wrong in either of the minutes. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as read, as stated. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, Department Head reported by Police Chief John Garcia. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, it's been a couple of years since we had department heads make their presentation to the commission. We did have an earlier report from the Aquatic and Recreation Department, but we had a series of really long agendas, a lot of things in the hopper, a lot of things happening. So we're getting back to the commission now. We'll follow up with each department presenting their department report to you. This is an opportunity for the commission to ask questions directly to the department head and the department head to give whatever information they want to, to the commission and to the public without going through the city manager filter. So, so that's good. What we really encourage the department heads to do, and we're kind of giving them a free mic here, but to update you and the public as far as where we're at on those goals that we set in our strategic planning session sometime back and really tie that into where we're at currently. In addition to that, just letting you know what's going on in the department, what's happening in the department, where their emphasis is. So that's what we're doing, Mayor.
Thank you. Chief?
Mayor Commission, Mr. City Manager. Just briefly to touch on the judge's point of view on the noise ordinance. The officer cannot be the victim of that ordinance. So upon responding to a call, the officer will make contact with the reporting party if they're willing to do so. If the reporting party is willing to do so and willing to go to court, that person will be cited and then the judge will hear their side once they are in court. But the officer, just like disorderly conduct, cannot be a victim of that ordinance. So that is, that is the problem we run into as far as reporting parties wanting to go to court to testify to the violation of the ordinance. So moving on, if I can. So I had to start off with this. Obviously, SafeWise announced that Ratone is the number two safest city in New Mexico. Due to the efforts of the community, as I was just talking about, the community being cooperative with the police department and the response of the police department itself, this was able to be achieved. Officers continue to respond to and handle an ever-increasing call volume with shrinking staffing. We'll add that on there. Calls for service, 2018, there's an asterisk next to it just because we were, our CAT system was down for five months of the year. So we do not have a count for those five months, but for the seven that are accounted for, 4,748 calls, as you can see, were accounted for in 2019 and we're almost to that mark here in June at 3252. Reports taken. I thought this was a key point to show to the commission. 2017, total reports were 1244. At this point in June in 2017, we're at 534. 2018 reports were 1303. As you can see, there is an increase. At this point in 2018, we're at 617 reports. As of right now, as of yesterday, we are at 837 reports. We are well over 200 reports higher than we were last year and over 300 from the year previous to that. The officers are extremely busy and staying on top of things. Citations. Even though we're handling that higher call volume, the officers are still taking initiative to get out there and serve the public by issuing citations for traffic violations. As you can see, in 2017, 1381, 18, 1309, and we are on track to blow past both those numbers this year in 2019. DWI, another issue here in Ratone, as you can see, in 2017, 22, really jumped in 2018 to 39 DWI arrests. And this year alone, into June, we are at 26. So again, we're projected to get past the 39 mark that was set last year. That includes felony and misdemeanor DWIs. That's kind of lumped into one at this point. Violent crime, the big goose egg there at the left, thank God for that. No criminal homicides for the last three years. As you all know, previous to that, we had several, six total, which I'm happy to say that five have been adjudicated and convictions have been reached. Thanks to our relationship with the DA's office, we've been able to adjudicate those cases fairly well. Robbery, one in 17, five in 18. It was a little rough, but we're over halfway there in 19 for robbery cases. Sex offenses are low. As you can see, the aggravated assaults were extremely high last year at 68, jumped quite a bit from the previous year, but that has calmed down this year so far. Knock on wood, we are at 18. Property crimes. You can see a trend in those graphs, except for that last one. There is a drop each year for burglary, 2017, 18 and 19. Obviously, we're on track to double that 20 and make it 40, which would come in well under the 63 from last year. Motor vehicle theft is down. Larceny is trending down quite a bit. And criminal damage to property, which saw a spike last year, has calmed back down this year. Narcotics arrest, this is anything from the user to the seller. For 2019, we're already at 61 arrests, well on track to get past the 74 benchmark set last year. The police department is currently budgeted for 14 police officers, six civilian communication officers, one records clerk and two animal control officers. Currently, we have 11 certified officers and two commissioned, meaning they have not gone to the police academy as of yet. One officer is set to go on July 7th and will graduate October 19. Currently, dispatch is operating with four certified, which is extremely low for them. One uncertified who is still in training. So we have four ladies over there holding the fort down for us until we can get a few more trained. We had a full roster. One of the ladies that come on with us wasn't on with us for maybe three weeks and she had a tragedy in her family and ended up having to resign her position and leave from there. Interviews are forthcoming for dispatch positions. As far as patrol goes, we are three down. Now, when it says budgeted 14, we actually have 15 slots, counting the SRO position. So we're currently three short. I have one offer out, which I expect to be accepted and then that process starts, but that officer's not going to be able to get to us for about a year due to his lack of experience. Captain Valdez continues to oversee the Investigations Division. He's second in command at the police department and an invaluable asset to the department and the city. I commend you, Officer Captain Valdez, for all the work you do. K-9 Carlo has been an integral part of the police department. After going through my presentations, I noted that Eros had just died and, you know, we were going to get this dog last time I made a presentation. So he's been doing excellent for the last four years that he's been here. That Sergeant Coca doing a demonstration at Longfellow School for the Kids and that was this year. SRO. Officer Hightree has done an outstanding job in this position for the last two years. We are still monitoring the DOJ website and monitoring for a new SRO grant. Once that comes available, we will apply. I keep an eye on that. I know Masanta Nucci keeps an eye on that as well. The police department is dedicated to this program and hopes to continue for many years to come. There is a question as to whether or not Officer Hightree will finish this third year, but another officer stepped up and shown some willingness to take the position. So it will be filled one way or the other. Dispatch Center Supervisor Lopez has completed her first full year in the position since Carol's departure. She continues to learn and excel at that position. Tons of questions in and out of my office all day long, so tons of questions. Emergency 911 equipment has been approved and paid for. The problem is Carol's contact at DFA was Bill Range. He up and resigned suddenly. So the problem is whoever fills his shoes is going to have to pick up the ball with the equipment and get that up here and get it installed. Radio upgrades, I spoke with the chief of the fire department, Chief Espinosa, about doing some upgrades for our radio. We're in the stone age with that over there in dispatch, so that is a next project to look at. Two graduates for the dispatch center in 2019, Berta V. Hill and Becky Modis. So they graduated this year. They're doing an excellent job. Animal control, Mr. Taft retired this year. He's still in the books, but Hector has taken his place and so far, so good with Hector. He's a little overbearing sometimes and he needs the reins pulled a little bit, but he's doing good. He's doing good. He runs into the same issues with the animal ordinance in municipal courts, so he's fighting that fight. Working on partnerships, just this last week, we had to work with the FBI and Fort Collins Police Department for an incident that landed in our lap here in Ratone. Crime Stoppers is always, is a partner and has been since they've come into their own. DEA, as I mentioned earlier, the District Attorney's Office. I can't say enough about Consuelo and Sherry and how well they've done in that office and stabilized what was going on there. The state police, specifically Agent Ryan Boone, who is our, a crime scene tech, who helps us on our major scenes and helps us get a case sewn up really nicely. The Rocky Mountain Information Network, we've used them as well on a different case and they are excellent, fast to respond and took very good care of us. Quickly, with strategic planning, wanted to update you on this. We were able to purchase three new vehicles this year, two chargers and a truck. The truck went to the K-9 officer. We're having no issues with them. We were able to push some of the other cars down to get rid of the 2006 Durangos that we still had on the road that we're glad to have off. Computer aided dispatch system, that target is 100%. The CAT system is up and running. We haven't had any hiccups, no ransomware. Things are running smoothly with that. MDT replacement and software, thanks to the city manager and the state, we were able to acquire $50,000 through capital outlay. We will be making that purchase for the in-car computers after July 1st. So that is definitely 100%. So that is definitely 100% target. Maintaining the facility, the only question I would have for the commission is on the roof. I know Michael and I, Michael Ann and I have spoken, and I know you guys have had some issues with that. Just curious where we're at with that, because every time it rains, it's, we're putting trashcans out, so that's the only question I have for that.
Mayor, we're going to buy him some new buckets.
Buckets, bigger buckets. So.
That's been a battle.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Okay. These were the primary strategic plans. As you can see, three of them are 100% complete. Unfortunately, with the vehicles and our aging fleet, that is a continuous measure that will happen every year. Increase current standard for coverage to ensure proper placement of field resources in relation to potential risks. Demands placed on workforce, replacement of weapons. There's a continued measure, we're at about 80% of necessary staffing. As I told you, we are a few short. We may be one more short here soon. We're recruiting, but Raton's a tough draw for law enforcement when APD and Rio Rancho and BCS overthrowing their pay rates where they're throwing them. So Hobbs, another one, for instance. Mary, you and I talked about that before, so. Increase and maintain effective 911 Communication Center. As I told you, the furniture is brand new, a little over a year old. Carol was able to obtain a grant for new furniture. We're working on the new E911 system, which will take place probably in this next fiscal, we're hoping. And again, the radio. So it's a continued personal measure for 19 and 20. Maintain effective response force to efficiently handle emergency and non-emergency calls. As I stated before, we are short. Our call volume is up, but we are still at 100% of emergency calls with a total response time of 10 minutes or less. First unit on scene within five minutes or less, still with the short manpower. There's no complaining going on here. We will handle our business, but we are short. That is just the nature of our job across this country and across this world anymore. So, continued personnel, personnel measure for 19 and 20 is recruiting and trying to bring, hopefully, certified people in. It's just a lot easier with certified, so. Community policing efforts. Not to harp on it, but like I told you, being short, being shorthanded, having a high call volume, the police department and its men still find time to community police. On the top left there, it's Patrick Josh Wood. We have a great relationship with him and the Family Worship Center. They've assisted us with stranded travelers, transients before, getting them rooms and/or tickets to get them food or ride out. Center there, Sergeant Coca going to the Beehive to have breakfast. Him and Officer Will Darte went in there a couple of weeks ago and had a good time. Top right, that's the Tricker Trunk. The officers are taking part in, decorated the back of the unit, handed out candy for the kids. It's not you, Santa, sitting over there in bottom left, but the Raton Police Officers Association, when they had Santa in the park, had a raffle, raffled off a few bikes to the kids and did some good work there. Center bottom there, since we no longer have the shop with a cop, the program was come up with where they received a list of wanted items, I believe you were there for that, Commissioner, and members of the police department, Sheriff's Office, and did FD take part in that, Chris? No. Were able to go over there and hand out toys to the kids who really deserved them, so that was a good operation there. And bottom right, Officer Martinez doing an anti-drug class with the young Marines. That's just a few examples for you guys. We're also out there conducting Safer New Mexico Now operations, saturation patrols and DWI checkpoints. Stranger Danger, Halloween Safety, each year in October, officers along with McGruff. And dispatcher will educate school students on Halloween safety. It's another good program that the guys really like. The department is and will continue to be committed to public safety. We appreciate your continued support. If you have any questions, Commissioners, I'd be happy to answer.
Chief, we think you guys are doing an outstanding job with the force that you have and the equipment that you have. You're on target for what we set out in our strategic planning. I think that's a commendation to you and your staff, as well as Mr. Berry keeping you guys in line. But I think you guys are doing and continue to strive to improve and do better.
What comment I would make, Mayor, is on the Safe City ranking, and we rank number two, we moved up significantly from the previous year. All of the other cities in the top five, if not the top eight, are the wealthiest cities in New Mexico. I mean, that makes a difference in the nature of crime in your town. And you know, here's, Raton moved up and jumped a lot of those, so I think it's a lot more impressive because they, in that article, if you saw that, they attached income statistics with it, and it really makes a difference, you know, to the local police department, and it makes a difference in their budget as well. So we're doing it with getting good results, I think, with, you know, limited personnel. I think there were two times for about 10 minutes each that we were fully staffed, and that's hard to achieve. And, you know, the budget is tough. It's tough right now, and so keeping the equipment, keeping everything that we need, and trying to be competitive, that's a challenge, and we're getting good results.
Absolutely. For sure. Thank you for your.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have one just curious question.
Yes, ma'am.
Just your, I know that we have a lot of issues with behavioral health, mental health issues, and I can see when a car gets arrested or up and things like that. What's your perspective on that, and is there anything that the city can do to better support you in that role?
Well, it's just a matter of services. We don't have the services here to deal with that. A lot of our mentally challenged calls that we deal with are also narcotic-induced. So it's not just a mental health issue, it is a drug issue as well. Every single person that we arrest has a hypodermic needle on them, every dang near, about 95% of the time, cap. And we take them to the jail, and of course, the jail's like, we're not touching them until you get them cleared. So off to the hospital we go, and as I stated, we are short. There are two officers on the street, so that officer's tied up, the other guy's running around answering calls, but it's a broken system, and without any measures to help us locally, there's really not much out there. There's really not. You know, we had an issue last week. A man injured himself, but he was under arrest. The officer had to be posted at the hospital, I believe it was for, gosh, seven, eight hours before the guy was released and had to be taken to jail. We had to post him there because he was a threat to the community, and we could not allow him to stay in the ICU by himself. So it's just we do not have the services in town, and getting services to town would be key.
Do you, have you talked to any other communities that are successful in that in any way?
No, ma'am. I haven't really reached out.
I've just heard that it's a problem statewide as well, so I was curious to see.
Absolutely.
That was, that was the main focal point of our group Saturday. Chief Heavy from Farmington. No community is having any success with this. And he feels some of the problem is, as John just stated, the chief just stated, you take them to the hospital to clean them up a little bit, then you throw them in jail, and that's it, they're done. You're not helping them. They're not getting the help they need, and that's where we need to fix the problem. Because you haven't done anything for that person.
I certainly appreciate everything you and your staff do, and hope you pass that along to them.
Yes, ma'am, my word. All right. Thank you for talking. See you.
Do you have a noise gun? Are you keeping?
No, we actually do not have a despot meter.
If you could borrow one from Pueblo?
Well, like I stated, ma'am, without someone coming and willing to testify from the community, the judge would not accept it.
I would always testify.
Okay. Did you hear that?
Okay.
You're still plugged in there.
Yes, I will. It's not, I think of all the other people waiting at 6:00 AM.
Okay. Moving on to item D, deliberate and act on, whoops, I think I missed one. Item C, public hearing rezoned request by city manager to amend the zoning designation from Mobile Home Subdivision, MHS, to R5 Residential District where attractive land described as lots 17 through 20, block 16 a fairview addition consisting of 3.7 acres, more or less, parcel owned by Mark Penya. Mr. Berry.
Mayor, Commission, we have talked about some rezoning business previously, and I believe it was about a year ago that the commission did hold a public hearing on this very rezoning request. Now, you may recall that at that meeting, there was a potential buyer of the lot that attended the public hearing, and he had stated that he would like to maintain that Mobile Home Subdivision zoning, and according to the ordinance, the Planning and Zoning Commission will make a recommendation to the commission. However, the ordinance does not require a public hearing at the Planning and Zoning Commission. The ordinance does require a planning, a public hearing to be held at the city commission. And we'll talk a little more about this public hearing and the ordinance requirements as we go, but the fact that the planning and zoning recommendation to rezone from Mobile Home Subdivision to R5 Residential was reached without the input of the prospective property owners, someone that had an interest in it, and without the benefit of a public hearing, the commission chose at that time to postpone the decision, send it back to Planning and Zoning, and have them reevaluate that. So I'm here to report that that happened. The planning and zoning has met. They've conducted a public hearing on this issue, and they have forwarded their recommendation to you. So we'll talk about the recommendation a little bit. But this was an item that was brought to Planning and Zoning and to the commission by staff, and the rationale really is that the zoning ordinance and the zoning map, they're integral parts of the city's comprehensive plan. And in reviewing the comprehensive plan and reviewing our zoning component of that, we noticed that there are some areas on the zoning designation of the zoning map that are spot zones, meaning that at the time the zoning was adopted, there was a specific land use there that didn't conform with the comprehensive plan. It wasn't in line with that plan. And the comprehensive plan in regard to zoning really generally states, we're going to develop the community with residential in certain areas, we're going to have commercial in certain areas, we're going to have industrial in certain areas. And while this would be a residential use, and the surrounding area is residential, this was Mobile Home Subdivision, which would allow single-wide manufactured homes, but the use was Mobile Home Park. It was not Mobile Home Subdivision, it was Mobile Home Park. So that use ended in 2012. It ended when the property owners of that facility at the time basically abandoned the property. The city stepped in and cleaned it up. It was a very problematic property, and the lot has not had a use, been vacant since 2012. You'll recall that we also looked at the rezoning on a similar property, it was the Morgan Building property, which was zone industrial, grandfathered in. That use had come to an end sometime back, and so it was rezoned to C3 to conform with the plan and the surrounding area. So the intent of staff here is to eliminate this spot zone. It was a zone that was specific to one tract of land, and the surrounding area generally is developed as single-family homes, R5 residential. There is, the racetrack property is adjacent to it, that's Zone C4. There was also a C3, that's the area off to the west of this tract. But the comprehensive plan states that we would like to see this area develop single-family residential. So the fact that it had been vacant, that's where the request from staff had been brought forward. So we have worked on this for some time. The Morgan Building property was rezoned. I would tell you that it's not the only spot zoning issue that we have in town or on the map. However, if there's an active use of that, we're not going to step in and rezone a non-conforming use that's active. So these are two that were not active. Back to the planning and zoning's recommendation, they now have conducted a public hearing, they've heard this issue twice and discussed it, and they have voted unanimously, and that took place on June 12, 2019, to recommend to you, the commission, that the tract be rezoned from Mobile Home Subdivision to R5 Residential District. In their findings in forming that recommendation are that the tract has been vacant, and it's a chance to eliminate a spot zone, and with the R5 District, that's a higher and better use and better supports the property value of that area. Their finding was to maintain either a Mobile Home Subdivision designation or Mobile Home Park, which is really what the current property owner stated he would like to see, really results in likely lower property values in the area. So that's the findings of Planning and Zoning Commission. And I'll hold up there, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. As is stated on the agenda here, this is the public hearing portion of this. If anyone has any questions for Mr. Berry, we will entertain them at this time.
Did they buy their lot, or do they pay rent, space rent?
Yeah, Mayor and Commission, there is no use currently of the lot, but under Mobile Home Subdivision, there would be mobile homes, manufactured housing, could be modular housing, that would be sold with the lot.
They buy the lot, they don't pay space rent?
Not space rent, that's not allowable in the subdivision. Right. Now, the current property owner, and I would state that ownership of the property has changed since we talked about this here in 2018. So the property owner was notified at the time that we were contemplating rezoning, and the property owner did make a statement in front of Planning and Zoning, and he would like to keep it zoned for Mobile Homes, as his statement was. However, the use of Mobile Home Park would not be allowed in the present zoning of Mobile Home Subdivision. Those are different. He did state that he may construct double-wide manufactured housing or modular housing. The Planning and Zoning Commission noted that those are allowable uses in an R5 zone, just not single-family manufactured housing. That would not be allowed in an R5.
And was he fairly appeased with that, or not really?
Well, Mayor, let me bring this up. Under the ordinance, we would conduct a public hearing, which we've scheduled here. However, I have a concern, and I need to deliberate with staff that the notification to landowners that's required by the ordinance, I'm not sure if that was completed timely for this public hearing, so I'm going to recommend to you that we schedule an additional public hearing, and then under the next item, we delay action to make sure that we've made the proper notification. I'm not sure that that has occurred, or the private poster, some of the steps that are required by the ordinance. So, Mr. Penya, Mark Penya is the current property owner, he was present for Planning and Zoning. I'm not sure if that notification has really been completed, so Mr. Penya is not present here tonight, but I think the Planning and Zoning has stated, they're making a recommendation to the commission. He would also have the chance to address the commission and as well as other property owners. As a matter of fact, anybody can give their opinion to the commission in here for this rezoning, but we want to make sure that everybody's been properly notified.
Where is the Fairview Edition, approximately? Where is it? From light 25, like from here? What intersection is Fairview?
Yeah. Ma'am, Mayor and Commissioner, the location of the property is on, it's adjacent to the horse racetrack. It would be on the south end of town. It would be west of Brilliant. The address is 444 Wooddro Avenue. This would be west Wooddro.
It's not anywhere around here?
No.
Let's do this out.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All righty. I will move to item D. We have a deliberate enact on Resolution 29, 2019-35. We have a recommendation from Mr. Berry that we postpone this action until we can clarify that the public hearing notices were properly done.
Also move?
No second.
We have a motion and a second to postpone to a further date. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E. Mayor Pro Tim, I am going to, on item E, advocate the gavel to you. I will be abstaining from this item as I have a conflict of interest.
Very good. This item is to deliberate enact on memorandum of understanding between the city of Raton and Colfax County Senior Citizens Center. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, the reason primarily that this comes in front of the Commission, Mayor Pro Tim and the Commission, excuse me, is that the seniors are housed in a building owned by the city of Raton. So the memorandum of understanding, and this is a continuation of a usage and an agreement that we've had longstanding, would be to continue that use. But the building is owned by the city of Raton now. The city of Raton would offer additional support to the Senior Citizens Center, has offered that support, as well as Colfax County. So typically, we'll partner with them on various funding arrangements or grant opportunities as fiscal agent, or provide some maintenance or improvement to the building. We try to work with them, and Colfax County is very supportive of the programs as well. So I think that this would be required for those type of arrangements, and to allow seniors, the seniors' organization, to pursue their normal course of funding.
I believe this Monica Thinkbone, did I say it right?
Yes, you did.
Yeah, good. I believe she has some words for us to help us.
I'm going to try to be short and sweet here. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim and Commissioners. I'm Monica Thinkbone. I'm the program manager at the Colfax County Senior Citizens Center, Inc. I am here in regards to the MOU between the city of Raton and the Colfax County Senior Citizens. I want to thank you first off for your continued support. What you have in front of you is our standard MOU with one exemption. As shown on Exhibit A, the DFA is now requiring us to show compensation relating to in-kind donations. And so, I was going to say I can stand here if you have any questions, and see if I can try to answer them.
So to list those out, it's congregate meals, home-delivered meals, transportation, chore, homemaking, and recreation.
Yes.
Total, 455 million, no, thousand, sorry, 822.50 cents.
Yes.
Do we need to delineate that out in further? Everybody okay with that?
Okay, thank you, and you guys have a good evening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So entertain a motion.
So moved. One second.
Very good. We have a motion and a second to accept the memorandum of understanding between the city of Raton and the Colfax County Senior Citizens Center, Inc.
I believe Michael Ann asked me to remind her that we need to authorize Scott to sign that as well.
Oh, all right. Thanks for that.
Amended with stipulation that the city manager may do so.
All right. Michael Ann, can we have a roll call go over this?
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster?
Yes.
And the mayor is abstaining.
Motion passes, and I'll pass the gavel back to you.
Thank you, Madam, Mayor Pro Tim. Appreciate it. Thank you for your recommendation, Matt. Seniors will enjoy it. Item F, deliberate enact on the event form for the Fourth of July VFW Street Dance. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, VFW has proposed a street dance against this year, again this year on Fourth of July. That would take place on Park Avenue, something that we're familiar with and has happened before. You can see that city staff has reviewed the form, coordinated this event so that everything is done safely. You see that the certificate of insurance is attached, and you have my recommendation for approval for the street closure.
All righty. Any questions for Mr. Berry?
I make motion to approve the event form for the Fourth of July VFW.
One second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the event form for the Fourth of July Street Dance. Is there for any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam G, deliberate enact on Lodger's Tax Board recommendations. We have three of them before us. Gate City Music Festival, KCRT, KZ Radio, and KRTN Radio. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, this is a list of three recommendations that were formulated by the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board, resulting from their meeting on June 21, 2019, excuse me, they met on June 19, 2019. I was not present at the meeting, so I'm basically reading from the list. However, I think that the city clerk was present for the meeting or part of the meeting, so she might be able to help us if any questions come up. But I go down the list of recommendations. The Lodger's Tax Advisory Board is recommending to the City Commission that $5,632.20 be awarded to KBKZ, KCRT for advertising. These funds are to come out of the fiscal year 20 budget, specifically the radio advertisement line. Second recommendation, Lodger's Tax Advisory Board is recommending to the City Commission that $13,655 be awarded to Raton Main Street for marketing and advertising of the Gate City Music Festival. These funds are to come out of the fiscal year 20 budget, and specifically the annual events line item. And then lastly, they have given you a recommendation that $7,254.14 be awarded to KRTN for advertising. These funds are to come out of the fiscal year 20 budget, and specifically the radio advertising line item. I think all three of these are ongoing items that we have done for a number of years.
If I could, it was just my understanding that the Gate City Music Festival, this allocation would be for this fiscal year.
Oh, okay.
And then the other two, the both radio advertising allocations would be for next year's budget, and I would include those in the final budget.
We do have Jessica Barfield present here from Raton Main Street, too, if you have any specific questions on Gate City Music Festival. However, I think when we get closer to the event, definitely they will be ready to report to you. I think it's going to be bigger and better this year, and grow, continue to grow, and be a good event, signature event for Raton.
I will just very quickly say, this is our first of two requests. We will be back for the next fiscal year, so making sure this comes out of this fiscal year is really important. As Scott alluded to, we are growing this event, adding an extra night, and adding some really cool attractions this year, and so we're excited. Obviously, that means we need more sponsorships, and so we're continuing to do that. Since this last report was written up, we've obtained another $6,000 in sponsorship, so we are continuing to do so. But we will be back again next fiscal year, and I can give you more details whenever you'd like them.
Who's the mainliner?
We have Josh Gallagher. He was on The Voice two years ago, and he will be coming out here. We're pretty excited about that. We actually have Zoe Elliott opening the show this year as our local entertainer. In the past, we've always had a singer-songwriter from out of town, and we decided to open that up as a youth scholarship and keep the money we've been giving local. And so she'll be the first recipient of that. And then, of course, Will and Crystal will be back. One of the biggest things that we are doing this year is, in the past, we've always had a mechanical bull. This year, we're actually doing a full kid zone. We were able to kind of combine our efforts. We were, we found someone that did tents and attractions, and combined our buying power. So we will have tents and eight attractions this year, including an 80-foot obstacle course and a guy, like, all of it will be free except for one adventure ride. And so we'll have seven different obstacles and courses, including a almost 40-foot water slide out there for those couple of days.
I like water slides.
And we're doing a youth night on Friday night in collaboration with Zia Youth. We have a DJ, street dance, all of the attractions will be up, as well as some food and drink ready for the youth on Friday evening. So we're really trying to expand it, but keep it at the same price, and we were able to get all of those attractions in our tents for the same price as a bull in tents in the past. It took a lot of willing and dealing, and actually, they became a sponsor. They gave us $8,000 in kind towards our event. So we are working on it, but you will see us again for a different ask next fiscal year.
Sure.
And I have to tell you, I'm really excited, and we can officially announce it because we have contract in hand for next year. We will have the Bellamy Brothers here at the Shiller Theater.
Nice.
Nice. Sweet. Any other comments, questions? Michael Ann, would you recommend we take these individually, or can we do them all as one?
Whatever your preference is, I mean.
I would prefer we do them all.
I make a motion to approve all Lodger's Tax Board recommendations.
One second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board recommendations as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Deliberate enact on IT services agreement between the city of Raton and Envision IT Solutions. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, in recent years, we have had an arrangement with an IT services company for a per-incident type of response, and I would say that while that's a money saver, that's taking a lot of risk with our data. And so we've looked for a generally a system of, we've evaluated our risks with our information We've come up with some steps that we want to implement, and basically, that's upgrading operating systems, that's upgrading some hardware, that's keeping up with the software requirements that we see continually. And another step of that would be to look at a managed IT system. So we looked at vendors, and we have contacted a vendor, and they've visited Raton and met with all of our department heads that are involved in the IT systems here in City Hall, not the remote ones. And that's Envision IT Solutions. So they do have a purchasing agreement. They look like a good fit with the city of Raton, and so what you have in front of you is a managed IT services agreement, meaning that we would have a monthly expense with them that we would share with the utilities to manage our system here locally. That would include utility data, that includes personnel data, payroll data, the data that the city clerk would maintain for our financial submittals to the state of New Mexico. It does not include things like library or fire and ambulance. We will work into that. But we have brought this service agreement to you for your consideration. We would estimate that the cost of this combined here would be, and it's based on the per desktop or per server price, but we would estimate that it would be about $1,800 a month, and we'll have to iron out the details of sharing that with utilities, but for the general fund, I would estimate it's between $600 and $1,000 a month is the cost that we would have. With our risk analysis, I would tell the Commission that that's worth it. We've got by cheaply for a number of years, but we would be at risk. With this system, with the upgrades of operating system and hardware that we talked about, we'll better manage our risk. We won't eliminate that risk, but we will better manage it. Now, I'll tell you that we get the same thing every organization sees. We see problems come in every day on a daily basis. And as Chief Garcia said, we've experienced some actual problems in the past with the police department, and it did compromise our CAD system for some months. So we've strengthened that system up, but we really have to look at the organization as a whole. And in addition to that, I would tell the Commission that the municipal lead will start to offer insurance coverage for cyber security or cipher attacks. They have not had such a thing up till now, but several New Mexico cities have had expensive attacks that you find out later you don't have insurance coverage for. So we'll see in the upcoming years, we'll see a cost for insurance for our IT systems, not something we've experienced before. But it's just a matter of functioning in the world today. So you have my recommendation for approval of this, but myself and Michael Ann, we would certainly stand for any questions that you would have.
Two questions for Mr. Berry or Michael Ann.
I think, like you're saying, I think this is extremely vital, and we're behind the time of needing to have this done. And I do like this contract has a grave termination clause. If we're unhappy with their services, it's pretty quick to be able to get out of it and find someone else that, you know, would work for us, so.
It's very prudent.
I would say that Envision IT Solutions, they provide similar services to other New Mexico municipalities. Municipalities are size. We have talked with those municipalities, and they come highly recommended by those clients.
Well, I will move to approve a contract with Envision IT Solutions, the agreement with the city of Raton.
One second.
Do we need to add on any stipulation that you are going to have to sign, or?
Well, I think we would have the mayor sign this one.
Okay.
All righty. So we have a motion and a second to approve the service agreement between the city of Raton and Envision IT Solutions. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item I, deliberate enact on Resolution 2019-36, acceptance of New Mexico Department of Transportation Cooperative Agreement Control Number L400447, and Pledge of Matching Funds. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, you recall back in February, we had talked about applying for local government road funds. There are actually two applications that we submit. So as far as the cooperative agreement program, we evaluated our options. We made a recommendation to the Commission that we apply for the reconstruction of Kearney Avenue in the amount of $150,000. Our estimate on Kearney Avenue actually would have been a little higher than $150,000, and we would have made up the difference. And we were notified recently that we were... And we were notified recently that we were awarded cooperative agreement funds. However, the total amount, this is our share plus DOT share, $51,053. So that's well short of the $150,000 that we applied for. It's not really an effective amount for the reconstruction of Kearney Avenue or any similar type of project. So what I'm bringing to you tonight is a recommendation I'll discuss, and that would be to change the scope of work for these grant funds to a payment maintenance program that would be widely distributed amongst various streets. So what I'm proposing to you is that we perform crack sealing on most of the asphalt-paved streets that have been constructed within the last tenure. All of those need crack sealing. What crack sealing will do is fill those cracks that allow moisture infiltration, which is damaging to asphalt pavement. You remember, a couple of years ago, we did some limited crack sealing, did part of Grant Avenue, we did part of Cedar Avenue, but in your packet as attachment A, you have a list of the streets that need crack sealing currently, and you see the total length, it's about, it's a little under 50,000 linear feet. So I would estimate that we might be in the area of a dollar a linear foot by the time we mobilize a contractor up, and we're getting close to that grant amount. But if we come up with some extra money, we've also said that we would include some signage improvements. I've listed East 10th Street and Frontage Road, but Mayor, I think that's something that we talked about at the last commission meeting, and we've done some evaluation on, and I think that one way or the other, we need to really look at signage on that particular street. And then we've talked about some pavement markings, and we have proposed a reconstruction project downtown where we would have to come back and redo all the pavement markings. But there are portions of downtown that really need pavement markings. So again, one way or the other, I think that we would want to do all of these things, the pavement markings specifically. So my recommendation to you is, and we put this in the form of a resolution, that we would change the scope of work to asphalt pavement crack sealing on all of these streets as seen in the attachment, signage improvements and pavement markings to the streets shown on the attachments. And I'll hold up there and answer any questions.
Okay, thanks, dear. Any questions for Mr. Berry?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2019-36, acceptance of the New Mexico Department of Transportation Cooperative Agreement Control Number L400447, and pledge of matching funds.
One second. I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution 2019-36. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item J, deliberate an act on acceptance of New Mexico Department of Transportation Municipal Arterial Program Cooperative Agreement Control Number L400475, and pledge of matching funds. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, you remember back in February, we did apply for municipal arterial program funding as well, and we had applied for a chip seal resurfacing of Fifth Street. So that would include all of Fifth Street, North and South. And I would report that we were awarded most of the funding that we asked for. We asked for a project totaling $300,000, that's DOT share plus City of Raton share. We were awarded a project totaling $253,556. So we'll have to reduce the scope of work slightly on that, but I would still recommend that we resurface Fifth Street, basically as we stated, and then we can either add the additional money and complete it, or we can reduce the scope of work. The breakout there is NMDOT pays 75% of that, or $190,000 and some change. The city, by approving the resolution, would commit to a minimum of $63,389. And of course, if we exceed that total amount, we would pay for that. And we, our match comes out of the gas tax, and we are able to make this match. We have sufficient funding to do this, plus the co-op project that we talked about, and I would recommend approval of the resolution and acceptance of the grant.
Any questions for Mr. Berry?
Make a motion to approve.
A motion and a second to accept and approve the MAP cooperative agreement for the Fifth Street project. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item six, deliberate an act on NMED loan agreement, amendment number two, to extend the grant subsidy for project number RIP0011 for transfer station project. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, you recall that we had several sources of funding for the proposed solid waste transfer station project. We have been talking about financing through New Mexico Finance Authority. Those funds are now available, but we also had a total of $250,000 from the New Mexico Environment Department, their RIP program, Rural Infrastructure Program that goes back a couple of years. And so we were coming up on a deadline to expend those funds. That would, that deadline would occur in August of 2019, and we still have about $80,000 remaining of that $250,000. And the breakdown on the funding was $225,000 was grant money, $25,000 was a loan. So we still have $80,000 of loan funding, and we would put it towards construction of the transfer station. Now, we anticipate that we can get bids in on this in the fall, start construction. We can do construction during the winter months and try to wrap this up about this time next year. That's the rough schedule at this time. We're still working on some bid documents. Internally, we still have some consultants that would contribute to that, but we are trying to put that together as one of our priorities. So we have requested an extension from New Mexico Environment Department. The extension would be then for a year to August of 2020, and we bring that to the commission for your consideration tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Berry?
I'll make a motion to approve the New Mexico Environment Department Loan Agreement, amendment number two, to extend the grant subsidy.
One second. A motion and a second to accept and approve the loan agreement, amendment number two, for the RIP project number 00011. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries. Item L, deliberate an act on resolution 2019-37, May 2019, financial report. Mike Land.
Mayor and Commissioner, we'll give the city manager a break. He's been talking the last few items. You do have your financial reports through the end of May in your packet. You will see that I've noted the final gross receipts tax distribution for the fiscal year that was received recently, and so our total year-to-date general fund, GRT, that was collected was only 95.65% of the budgeted amount. So as we've tracked this projection throughout the year, we will end the fiscal year with a negative 4.35% below our budget projection. However, we did see an increase in our small cities assistance this year, so that was more than enough to make up for that shortfall, so lucky for that. In addition, our general fund expenses are well below the budgeted amount for the time period, which is a result of our department heads' due diligence in working with the city manager and myself to kind of review certain expenses, capital outlay expenditures that maybe could have been delayed. So we have delayed certain things and have rebudgeted them for the next fiscal year. Also, the city, we did get our proposed interim budget submitted, and we've already received that approval, which I had provided you a copy of at the last meeting. So now our final end-of-year reports were coming up on the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30, so just a few more days left in this fiscal year. So we will be working with department heads to close out outstanding purchase orders, calculate those ending cash balances which get rolled forward as our July 1 beginning balances for the budget, and then we will start to prepare those end-of-year reports for DFA and bring a final budget to you for approval at the second meeting in July. So there's a lot to accomplish in a short period of time, but once that final budget is submitted, then at that point, we can't make any further changes unless we do formal budget adjustments. And we will present that final budget to you at the July 23 commission meeting. You'll soon report, I've given you a summary of our ending cash balances for the month of May. Our general fund is at $2,267,313, and that's the available cash. We do keep a 1/12 reserve on hand at all times, and so we far exceed that. We're probably five or six times the minimum requirement. And then I've also given you our ending cash balances for our various funds and the history report of our gross receipts. And then the only thing I wanted to point out on our financial report, you will see under the Capital Projects Fund in the 300, which is our airport project, that's the taxiway A, Phase 2 project, we are showing a negative cash balance, but that's only because we issued the check to the vendor, and then we held the check awaiting reimbursement from the grant. So we did receive that reimbursement the first week of June. We did just recently issue checks for the second pay-up, and yesterday, I submitted the reimbursement for that as well. So Kent Fryer was here with Mose and Horbin, and we got the second pay request prepared and submitted. So with that grant and any other grants, such as the juvenile justice, what will happen is we'll have some outstanding reimbursements as of June 30 that we'll record as accounts receivable, but we will have to probably do temporary transfers from the general fund to cover those reimbursements until those monies are received in July. So that's part of what I'll be bringing to you at the next meeting, once I can calculate all of that and get those reimbursements prepared.
Cool.
So is there any questions on the financial report?
I think you've done a great job managing the issues we've had with gross receipts this year. Am I looking at this correctly, that our June disbursement was up a little bit from last year?
It was. I did want to note, and I did mention this, I think, to the Financial Advisory Committee, because we did refinance the two Aquatic Center loans, we typically have an intercept of $17,416. That intercept did not come out in June because the new loans have taken effect, actually, I'm talking May. That intercept did not come out in May because we had already started the process to pay off those loans and take out the new debt at a lower interest rate. So yeah, that intercept did not come out, and it will not come out in the month of June, so, oh, well, no, I take that back. We're talking, yes, the June distribution for GRT. It did not come out. So May it did, but June it did not. So those new intercept agreements take effect in August, so we'll start seeing those monies intercepted from the August GRT payment. So, sorry, it gets a little confusing. And so that Aquatic Center loan, instead of having two loans like we did previously, that was refinanced into one loan and one intercept every month at a significantly lower interest rate than what we had before, so large savings over the long term.
I make a motion to approve resolution 2019-27, make a financial report.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2019-37, financial reports. Mike Land, could we have a roll call vote on this?
Commissioner Giacomo.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Schuster.
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Mayor Sagata.
Yes. Thank you. Item M, deliberate an act on resolution 2019-38, fiscal year 19, budget adjustment number 18. Mike Land.
I'm going to take one and pass it down. Apologize, I just really finished this right before the meeting. So the last couple of days, we've been reviewing our financial reports, like I said, working on some of those grant closeouts. So this isn't the last budget adjustment, but I kind of wanted to get in as many adjustments as I could prior to year-end, so that the final adjustment, there really won't be a lot to adjust. Within the general fund, those are just line item adjustments within the various funds. And then also, I am adjusting the transfer on our COPs grant, and that's just to adjust it to reflect the actual. So I did submit a grant reimbursement on that grant yesterday, so I have those actual figures as to what our total reimbursements will be, so I'm reducing that transfer on that particular grant. Within the other funds, Recreation Center Fund, that's just a line item adjustment. Now, our Lodger's Tax Promotional Fund and the Non-Promo Fund, we have collected more revenue than we had projected in Lodger's Tax revenue, so I'm making an adjustment to increase the revenue, but that also affects the transfer that we do every month, because we transfer 60% out of the promo fund into our non-promo fund. So that would require adjustments to that transfer out and also the transfer into the promo, non-promo fund. That's not necessarily due to an increase in Lodger's Tax revenue, other than the fact that we collected some, and I think I made a note on there for you, we did collect some delinquent taxes for multiple months in the prior fiscal year from two lodging vendors. So part of the reason that we've seen the increase is because of the collection of those delinquent taxes. Let's see what else I've got. The COPs grant, those adjustments will adjust those various line items to reflect the actual The Pool GRT Fund, I'm requesting an adjustment to reflect the actual loan payment, which was paid in the month of May. And then on the Transfer Station Project, because that project did not start in this fiscal year, last month on our quarterly report review with DFA, they just suggested that I adjust those, since we're not spending the monies in this fiscal year, and so that's pretty much the reason for that adjustment. And then that's been rebudgeted for FY '20. The Rec Center Loan, you'll remember, I did bring to you in April a request to adjust to make an additional debt service payment of $150,000. I did not include in that adjustment the adjustment to the principal line item, so I need to adjust that line item, and that was applied to the debt service in the month of May. And then I just have a couple line item adjustments for the police vehicle loan, sanitation loan. You'll recall that the loan payments are no longer coming out of the sanitation fund, but we did have payments coming from the escrow fund that was created as a result of the defeasance of the loans, so that's, would reflect still those loan payments that are coming out of the escrow. And then the new loan, we have pledged environmental gross receipts tax to the repayment of that loan. of that loan. Prior to that, the old loan, the payments were coming out of the sanitation fund. So that's why I've adjusted the $98,000, because we didn't end up needing to make any payments out of the sanitation loan for this current fiscal year. Other than that, trust and agency, those are just line item adjustments to reflect the actual municipal court fees that get remitted for the various state fees.
Thank you. Any questions for Mike Land?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-38, fiscal year 19, budget adjustment number 18.
A second.
A motion and a second to approve Resolution 2019-38. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item N, deliberate enact on Resolution 2019-39, authorization to write-off worthless checks issued to the City of Rattone. Mike Land.
Mayor and Commission, prior to my time with the city, there was a policy that was adopted in 2002. Since that time, because I was not aware of the policy, oftentimes I go back and I look through old records and I come across things. But we have had this policy in place since then, that any worthless checks, we should be reviewing this annually and bringing worthless checks to the Commission for a recommendation of write-off. You'll see by the list that I've attached with the records that I have, I've maintained a list, and we've just kind of carried these checks on the books for several years. Some of them are old and have been deemed uncollectible. Our efforts to contact some of these individuals and get them to come in and take care of this was unsuccessful. We could take individuals to magistrate court, which does cost about $75, I think, even just to file in court. So when you have checks that are written for $25, $30, it sometimes doesn't make financial sense to do so. So we do make every effort to send letters, attempt contacts by phone. Some people ultimately have just closed their accounts, and we can't track them down. So you'll see I'm making a recommendation to kind of clean up our books and just get these off the books and kind of start fresh. I think the oldest check that we have on here was 2003 in the general fund, and then most recently, they were in 2013 and 2012. So we've made pretty good efforts in more recent years to stay on top of this, and a lot of it thanks to Desiree, because she kind of makes those phone calls and tracks people down for me. But most people are generally cooperative if we can get ahold of them. But you know, their bank charges them a fee when a check bounces, so I mean, I know that they know that the check that they wrote was no good. So my recommendation would be for write-off, general fund 68881 and special revenue for 1244.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-39, authorization to write-off worthless checks issued to the City of Rattone.
A second.
A motion and a second to approve Resolution 2019-39. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item O, city manager's report. Mr. Berry.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just make one comment on the TMDL, well, two comments, meeting that was held here on June 13. This was the only public meeting for these proposed total maximum daily loads for the Canadian River and distributaries in the Dry Cimarron River. So happy that the Surface Water Quality Bureau traveled up to hold that in Rattone. Marty was present, covered that, and did a really excellent report on KRTN. So if people are looking for information, KRTN has got that. In addition, the Surface Water Quality Bureau of New Mexico Environment Department has got the information on their website. And that's important, because there currently is a 30-day public comment period open. That will close on July 5, 2019 at 4:00 p.m. And then, once that's closed, and they will answer any comments that they receive, they are planning on going to the Water Quality Control Commission meeting on August 13 of 2019, or as they say, the next available meeting, for approval of the draft final TMDLs. So if someone has an interest in that, the public comment period is open. I attended, along with Jason Phillips, the fiscal year 2020 planning meeting in regard to Rattone Municipal Airport. We met with representatives of Federal Aviation Administration, the Mexico State Aviation. We had our airport consultant present from Molsen Corbin, core city staff, and our fixed based operator. And we had a discussion of the five-year capital improvement plan. We discussed the priorities. We've got some planning documents to submit with Federal Aviation now, and as well as State Aviation, to get in line for funding in future years. And this will be on to some new things, as we've completed now the taxiway Alpha construction. That's something that we've talked about now for a couple of years. I think there's one sign that came in that was damaged that will replace. Other than that, construction is completed, and as Michael Ann talked about, we're in the process of closing that project out. But we'll submit documents to Federal Aviation, and then we'll start talking about where we go from there with new projects. Mayor, tomorrow I will attend the Northeast Regional Transportation Planning Organization meeting. That will be held in Springer. And we are members of NERCPO, and we have several things to talk about as far as projects that we think are a priority in the area. There is a new district engineer for District Four. We have asked for a meeting with him to talk about some of the issues that we've got locally, specifically things that need fixed on Second Street. So we'll meet with the district engineer. Hopefully, we'll detail out things that we're seeing that need some attention from DOT, and we'll offer our partnership in getting those things fixed as well. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Berry.
May I add to your report, sir? May I add something? When you go back to Jay, and you were discussing the budget for the ceiling, a dollar a square foot for a 50,000 square foot ceiling. I'm a retired house painter, so this is kind of my department, I understand. And I'd like to see the City of Rattone save some money. And I'm wondering if you can come up with perhaps alternatives to, were they planning on caulking these cracks, hand-applied caulking compound?
Ma'am, there is a New Mexico Highway Department spec on how this crack sealing is performed.
Oh, it has to, okay.
And we'll follow that, and we will have a competitive sealed bid process.
I would never want to bid it. I have bulging disc in my neck. But I was wondering if maybe you would consider, if it has to be done in another couple of years. That's $50,000 once or twice. That's a lot of money.
I think she misunderstood. This is asphalt.
This is roadwork, ma'am.
Oh, but you mentioned the ceiling cracks.
Ceiling, the cracks in the asphalt.
Oh, why do you use the word ceiling on a?
Well, you're sealing the cracks.
S-E-A-L.
Not C-E-I-L-I. I'm sorry.
Ceiling, yeah.
I thought you were going to spend $50,000 to repair cracks. I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
We've only, M-C-A-L.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry.
Any other comments? Commissioner Chatterley. Commissioner Jackma. Commissioner Chavez. Mayor Protim. With that being said, we are adjourned. Thank you.